...that are unwarranted. I have heard over and over again how Arlopa is this terrible law, and we want it repealed, and we want to ignore it.
That's not true.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Nobody spoke. Mr. Chergan has the floor.
I live here. I don't live in Chestnut Ridge, but I live here. I went to this high school. I sat in this elementary school.
Excuse me, excuse me. One speaker? No, 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 no. One speaker. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have, we have sat here since 7:30. Everyone has had a chance to speak, all right? And believe me, if other people would have retorted during the conversation, it would be rude. So I expect the same courtesy to Mr. Chergan that everyone else has received here. Thank you. You may proceed, Mr. Chergan.
Thank you. Arlopa was passed with unanimous consent from both sides of both houses, and it was signed into law by Bill Clinton. There's nothing that is passed unanimously. You are not going to have that overturned. You're not going to be able to ignore it. You're going to have to deal with it, and that is exactly what the board has tried to do. But let's take a second, and let's pretend that Mr. Clinton didn't sign that document in the '90s. Let's pretend that is not a law. Would your laws, as they currently are, would they be constitutional? Would they be appropriate under our law? No, they would not. Look at the First Amendment to the United States Constitution. It says that "The Congress shall not pass any law which establishes a religion or which interferes with the free exercise of that religion." You have a law today, and I'm going to be very brief, but you have a law today that says, in order to have a shul, a church, a house of worship, whatever you want to call it, you need to have five acres of land. Five acres of land. Do you know what that is? That's the equivalent of four-plus football fields. I don't know who passed that law. I don't know why it was passed, but it is incredibly illegal, and it has prevented the religious community from practicing their religion. And you can yell, and you can scream, and you can try to interrupt me, and you can hiss all you want, but the bottom line is, under the most sacred law that this country was founded, the First Amendment, this law is violating this whole community's rights. There are 700 Orthodox Jewish families that are living in your village today. There will probably be more as time goes on, but there are 700 families. You cannot ignore these people's rights. The village, the village board and the mayor are trying to balance the rights of everybody in the village. It is apparent to me that that is what they are trying to do. And believe me, there are portions of the latest iteration of the law that the Orthodox community is not happy with. However, we recognize that this is a balancing situation, and that there has to be give and take on both sides in order for you to live together in harmony. And I think you should allow the mayor and the village to do its job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chergan. Next, Mr. Mallory. Chris Mallory.
Good evening. Chris Mallory, 7 Imperial Lane, Chestnut Ridge. For the past 40 years, I've been an environmental manager. I have some expertise in that area. Many of the things that I have done have included preparing various and sundry environmental reviews, so forth and so on. I've taken a look at your secret submission, and I noticed that by your own admission that traffic and congestion like that is going to be a problem, already identified. Now, I don't know whether you know it or not, but we live in an area of air quality noncompliance, and I don't see anything that you've done to address that particular issue. I strongly urge you to put together a comprehensive plan which does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. Ms. Kogut, Hilda Kogut.
First, I have two more letters that were submitted that state that the sires are not in favor of the House of Worship resolution that I wanted to give you.
Thank you.
Hilda Kogut, 20 Pine Knoll Court. I'm not going to read this summary of the planner's report. I would hope that the document that Mr. Mogul provided you will find its way into your reading so that you'll see that another planner has some similar feelings to the planner that the village has hired. I believe that this law is wrong. I believe that the village of Chestnut Ridge deserves a comprehensive plan. First, we were told it was going to take five years or three years. Now we know, because a planner has told us, that it will take two years. Two years to allow this village to be formed, to continue to grow properly and under proper guidance. We don't have code enforcement here. We don't have a building inspector who knows what he's doing. We see rampant construction. If you allow this law to be passed, we are going to be looking like Muncie, and I don't want that. And I don't think anybody in this room wants that. This is a lovely village. And Mr. Chergan, I grew up in Chestnut Ridge. I don't know where you are. I grew up in Chestnut Ridge. I rode my bicycle around here. I am a Jewish woman. I live in Chestnut Ridge, and I am not an anti-
Ms. Kogut, if you could please address your comments for the board.
Well, the last time he was here, he implied such. In any event, I believe that this House of Worship resolution is ill-founded. Orthodox Jewish Coalition, who is here from the Orthodox Jewish Coalition? None of us in this room, or everyone in this room who's gotten up to speak, has identified themselves. Why have not members of the Orthodox Jewish Coalition come forward to speak about why they feel this plan is needed? I'm sorry. I don't believe it's needed. We need a comprehensive plan first. I ask you to take your time once, Mr. Mayor, and do the right thing for this village.
Karen Dimico, Karen Dimico, please.
Good evening. My name is Karen Dimico. I live in 16 Ledgewood Trail in Kinnelon, New Jersey. I've come here also, as you have, from Mawa, because we are watching what's going on. And what happens here impacts everyone. I graduated Spring Valley High School in 1985. I grew up here. I loved this village. I love this county. And I felt compelled to come and stand with the residents of this village here. To say, to say, it's shocking to see what's going on. I watched on YouTube, as many people do in surrounding areas, and watched a garage, so obviously a garage, on Three Spring Hill Terrace that's being used as a place of worship. And to even hear that there's argument over something so obvious, it's ludicrous to people who are watching. It's incomprehensible how this is allowed to go on and how you're not enforcing your zoning, and the building inspector is obviously not doing his job. And it makes it a place that people don't want to move to. I, right now, who grew up here, would not buy a house in this community. And I happen to also own one in the town of Woodbury, and that is currently up for sale. Thank you.
Ms. Dupree. Natalie Dupree.
Magali Dupree, 49 Spring Hill Terrace.
You just have to speak a little louder, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Magali Dupree, 49 Spring Hill Terrace. I am so sorry that Mr. Richard Miller was not here, because I wanted to, on the record, say that the way he addresses the community, the resident of this community, is disgusting. To call us "you people," and then tell us that they care about what we say, that they care about our comments. Remember, you were elected by the "you people," okay? So please, you want respect, then you need to show some respect. Now, I know this has been said by me, also by some people before. Mayor Presti had told us that our zoning laws were never out of compliance with Arlopa. So did Mr. Valentine, okay? So did people from the planning board and everybody else around. We are not out of compliance. So why are we fixing something that isn't broken? Also, Mr. Grant had said last week, last meeting, "This is what democracy looks like." But maybe from your point of view, from what's being done, but from what the mayor has done, he has already told one of our residents, "No matter what you say, this law is going through." Okay? That's not democracy. That is not democracy, okay? So this is just like a shame. Now, we were also told the parade law was forced on us. The parade law happens or was made because of the problem we had with the Torah dedication on Spring Hill Terrace, at Three Spring Hill Terrace, to be specific, okay? This was to address the problem that we had. And also, Mr. Miller had said that the law was trying to help a certain segment of this community, okay? Tell me this is not discriminatory. Now, I also looked at the latest version of your zoning plan. I want a question that I have. I know, I mean, I get an answer right now. The residential place of worship was changed to residential gathering place. This, according to my thinking, this means that anybody can gather there, whether it is a business or a place of worship, okay? Also, on page six, I believe, hold on. Page six, letter S, congregants was changed to users. Users. Users getting a service? It's not a religious service? It could be anybody. So right now, you've opened us up to whatever. Not just places of worship, but whatever people want to do. You also said that they have to have, the community place of worship can have a sign that is 24 square feet wide and at least six feet high. It may have lighting. You also said that the facade, there could be a facade in addition to the big 24 square foot sign. There could be, in addition, there could be a facade or a wall sign that is no more than 21 square feet. What is this village turning into? This is now from a residential area. I did not move into a commercial area, okay? I moved into a residential area. I moved out of the city so I wouldn't have to see these things. So I just don't understand the reason for this or what you're doing, because it doesn't make any sense, okay? Now, I also want to say, I kind of object to saying religious group, religious group, and only referring to one group. I'm also religious, okay? So please, do not insult everybody else by saying that only one group is religious, but that's the way we're seeing it, because we too are religious. And before we started the meeting, we pledged allegiance to the flag. And the last thing we said, "Justice for all." Is this really what's happening now? Is it justice for all? If not, then the words that we say when we pledge allegiance mean nothing. Thank you.
Lee Stixson. Lee Stixson. And again, name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lee Stixson. My address is actually in Manhattan, which I think is irrelevant, but I own two properties in Rockland County, and my family lives in Chestnut Ridge. So I think with that, I could speak to a few things.
I'm not preventing you from speaking. For the record, name and address for the record. You could live in-
Lee Stixson, Second Street, Manhattan. You want my zip code? Okay. So, first of all, I'd like to say, Mayor Presti, before I get into Arlopa, law, the whole premise of this seems to be your dire whatever to comply with the law. So if that's so, whether the next time you run for assembly or anybody else on the board, and I know this is not a Q&amp;A session, but maybe you can get back to us, you know, some time on this. I believe that zoning, building codes, public due process, all of those are actually also laws, which somehow you don't seem to have a problem with a lack of enforcement. Now, we can talk about Carroll Court, which is another one. The other places people have just mentioned, Spring Hill Terrace, that repeatedly seem to be not in compliance with the law, and there's no enforcement. So as far as Arlopa, and your big claim that we must pass this to be in compliance with Arlopa is a complete misread of the law, including the gentleman who spoke, who was a lawyer. And Arlopa, literally, you look it up, there's a bunch of lawsuits that have gone forward. It basically says you may not pass a law to explicitly be against someone practicing their religion. There is absolutely no part case whatever that says you must pass a law to permit, to allow, to facilitate someone, whatever religion is. And it has been passed in everything from Bible to African religions to Jewish religions, you name it. So your read on this is completely, completely wrong. And as a homeowner of Rockland County, and as the ladies from New Jersey said, this is from so many other perspectives, environmental, traffic, taxes, you name it. This is going on from the Hudson River straight up across Orange, Rockland, Sullivan County. There is, right now, if people aren't aware, there's a proposal to build 300 units on five acres on the Hudson River. It's going on at Hallowstraw. There's a mini, a mini Onsko golf course. There's a 75-acre parcel along Route 45. There's your brilliant plan here. I mean, this goes on and on and on. So let's talk about all that. Let's talk about tax exemptions. Let's talk about children. Let's talk about the tax base. Let's talk about traffic. Let's talk about schools. All of this. So if there could ever be a dire need for a comprehensive plan, if not for this town, for the county and the state, this would be the time. So maybe those are a few things you could think about.
Thank you. Sabrina Martin. Sabrina Martin.
Sabrina Martin, to Rockland Road. I just have a few comments to make that I have had some concerns about. It may not flow as well as I would like to, but there's some things I would like to say. First, I would like to address the comments that were made by the Board of Trustees, some members of the Board of Trustees at the last public hearing. A statement, "The reason why these illegal developments exist is because there are no zoning laws in place to regulate them." I do, I do not believe, now it's me speaking, I do not believe that is a true statement. These illegal developments exist because, number one, there's a total disregard for the law by pertinent individuals. And number two, along with that, we have a village administration that has not enforced the laws. Another statement, parking, that's a difficult issue. However, we are going to try something. But if one thing doesn't work, we'll try something else. Now, this is in reference to the proposal. This is a statement made by village leadership regarding the current proposal. "This statement is indicative of an approach that is at minimum nebulous, at best, very confusing and lacking of substance. Laws are established to create and maintain criteria, standards, and quality controls so as to minimize any possibility of, quote, 'something not working.'" During a planning board meeting in November, in response to a question I raised about the name change from residential houses of worship to residential gathering places, the village planner stated that the term was adopted from Amont zoning laws. So I chose to follow this lead. I reviewed and compared Amont's amended zoning laws dated in September 2018 along with Chestnut Ridge's proposal. Now, I agree with the mindset of adopting what's already in place and modifying to fit our needs, so as to not reinvent the wheel. Let's keep in mind, however, that Amont's zoning amendments is based on a comprehensive plan that they recently revised a few months before. Their use regulations have very clear criteria, standards, and quality controls that not only promote freedom of religion and freedom of assembly, but also create protections of health, safety, and welfare for its citizens. Just for an example, their use regulation with regards to what they call residential places of assembly and neighborhood places of worship require a special permit. Their parking regulations are clearly standard. Our current proposal is allowing for residential gathering places and neighborhood places of worship to only simply apply with a conditional permit. And we all know there's a big difference between a conditional permit and a special use permit. In addition, somehow or other, our environmental assessment report concludes that there's no need for an environmental impact study as there will be no impact on the environment of the village. This is based on how the environmental assessment application was completed and interpreted. I have a hard time understanding how you all were able to check off there's no impact on land, no impact on surface water, no impact on groundwater. Now, you approached this conclusion by developing a potential impact for the number of houses that will potentially be developed in the area. And then you backstepped and said, "Okay, well, 2,000, 1,000-plus number of houses can be developed, but maybe only 14 will become houses of worship." And you used that data based on what you allegedly compared to what was going on in Amont and what was going on in Wesley Hills. That's inadequate. You did not include what current number of houses of worship that we have, and nor did you include the fact that perhaps there will be smaller gatherings. Amont has a comprehensive plan where there's pages and pages and pages and pages that speak to land use and the impact of water, the creation of impervious services, which means parking lots, and the impact on water. And their, their comprehensive plan makes it very, very clear that they will not allow for any development to affect stormwater drainage, because that's going to impact public walls, private walls, or water use. How dare you create a plan that says it's not going to be an impact on our environment? How dare you create a plan that is going to have an effect on the quality of life, on health and well-being? I beg you to please go back, do what you're supposed to do with integrity, with comprehension, and a clear regard for what quality of life here in this village. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board of Trustees. You know, I'm sorry, Joel Celestin, 46 Spring Hill Terrace. I've spoken before, so, and I've heard many of the other speakers present issues from Arlopa to specific, you know, issues with the law itself. And, you know, when I started the process of really looking into this, I thought, you know, where we are right now, I find this to be actually quite complicated. So, you know, I made a statement one time that I have a day job, and I'm not an armchair attorney. And so I'm going to try to quote a few things. But one of the things that I would like to bring up is that when I looked at the way this law came about, it appears that there was an effort to appeal to the board to come up with changes to our zoning laws based on matters of convenience. And I don't want to insult anyone, but it appears that the changes are happening here as a matter of convenience. Now, I have to put myself in the shoes of, you know, members of the Orthodox community who have to walk a very long distance to, you know, to practice their religion, to go to their, you know, the house of worship. And I understand that. I actually took a walk from my turnpike back home, and it was a long walk. So there are occasions where I do see members of the religious group walking. But my concern is that if this law is being proposed as a result of a matter of convenience, then I'm looking at what the Department of Justice wrote, and I'm going to submit this as part of the record. But this is a guide to Arlopa. And one of the things that it says is that "Minor costs or inconveniences imposed on religious institutions are insufficient to trigger Arlopa protections." And so if it's a question of a matter of convenience, I think that there have been other court cases, Supreme Court cases, that I can't quote all of them, that have addressed the issue of religion and substantial burdens. And I think on several of them I read that convenience cannot be argued as a substantial burden. But it appears that everything you're doing here is based on communities. So I'm, you know, I'm sure you all know this, you're some good attorneys, a couple of you up there. But there is also another paper written by the Department of Justice. This is the statement of the DOJ on the land use provisions of Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. And I looked at one of the points. "Does Arlopa exempt religious assemblies and institutions from local zoning laws?" No. Arlopa is not a blanket exemption from local zoning laws. As a general matter, religious institutions must apply for the same permits, follow the same requirements, and go through the same land use processes as other land users. And I said, I can't quote every single case, but based on what I've read, and based on what I know to be the case here, I disagree with the attorney that said that the laws here specifically target members of the Jewish, Jewish religion with five acres. I don't recall reading one specific religious group being targeted by the five-acre minimum. But I do agree with one of the, what, one of the candidates, those proposed candidates for the trustee did say, is that we have to come to some type of reasonable agreement or solution. What you have proposed here is an extreme solution. And, you know, quite frankly, in hearing what some folks talked about with regards to the quality of our village, and I live on Three, uh, sorry, Spring Hill Terrace, and I have to walk by Three Spring Hill Terrace every single day. And I'm telling you, there is no mechanism to enforce what you have in place here. There's absolutely no mechanism to enforce this. And so I do ask the board to reconsider. I'll submit these, and I think I might submit a few more points in writing, probably citing a couple of cases for you to consider. Thank you.
All right, that concludes the folks wishing to speak this evening. Before I give the trustees an opportunity to speak, I'm going to try to address as briefly as I can a few of the points that were brought up without having to stir up a heck of a lot of ire. Number one, the convenience that we speak of is not the fact that- Number one, the convenience that we speak of is not the fact that a segment of the community that to practice their religion needs to walk. The convenience factor is that the fact of the matter is, our land use has one category for houses of worship, five acres or more. That is not convenient. They need, there needs to be other options. Now, in a perfect world, what would happen is, you only have an acre and you want to worship, so you have to go to the planning board, you have to go to the zoning board, because you have to go...
Whoop! Whoop! Go somewhere else?
Folks, please, I'm going to try to explain. When you only have a regulation that says five acres or more, now you have to go to the zoning board. So now you go to the zoning board, and you have to ask for permission or variance, okay? That's going to take time. Then you go to the planning board, and you get your site plan application. However, during the process of the site plan application, you made some changes, and now you have to go back to the zoning board. So what ends up happening is, the convenience of applying for a house of worship is not eight months, it's not a year, it's two and a half years, it's three years. Excuse me, excuse me, you asked me to explain, I'm going to try to explain! Please, one meeting, one meeting, one meeting, thank you. One meeting, thank you. Mr. Wasserman brought up a very good example of Madeline Terrace. Madeline Terrace applied for their house of worship permission, took them five years, five years to go through the planning board to get their permission. Now granted, there were bumps in the road on both sides, but it took them five years. Not convenient, not the fact that they have to walk, the fact of the matter is, it took five years to get themselves a house of worship. Now, moving on, moving on, there have been, there have been allegations of the shadow passing of the law. When folks want to see a new law, there's a numerous, there's numerous ways to go about doing it. One of them happened to be, there was confusion brought at a, at a, at a board meeting about our garage law. Our garage law was a little confusing, okay? It was brought out to us at a public meeting, right? So, we worked on it, took a couple of months, we passed the garage law, we passed the garage law, because somebody brought it to our attention that there was some confusion. We try to be proactive when we promulgate laws in this village. However, we're not perfect, we can't see and we can't anticipate everything. So we have folks contact us at various times to say, hey, look, you know what, you have a need for this, you have a need for that. And I should also say, this board has always been and continues to be accessible to everyone. There isn't anyone here who is not able to contact any one of us in some way, shape, or form to have, to say that they have an issue or that they have a problem. As a matter of fact, the respective boards in this village have that same ability, whether they're on the ARB, the planning board, or the zoning board, they have access to this board all the time. But for maybe one or two members of the three boards, there has never been a member of those boards come and ask this board, or recommend to this board, issues that they feel as though needed to be addressed. As a matter of fact, the last time, the last time I could recall it happening, I was on the planning board, and we had a meeting with the mayor and trustees, because we had some issues with regard to the way things were going. That was the last time I can recall a board or its members approaching the Board of Trustees. So, for people to say, we operate in the shadows, for people to say that we are trying to accommodate particular groups, I think it's unfair. You have to also look at this overall. We have been going at this, folks, since February of last year officially, officially. The planner put together the, 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 the idea and a basic draft in around November of 2017. So you want to talk about having an opportunity to talk about this thing? There has been continued opportunity. The fact that you may not appreciate how it made it to our desk, all right, I guess reasonable minds will differ, but the bottom line is, nothing was passed, nothing was set in stone until we do the process, and this is the process. So...
You're not listening! No work, you don't pay attention, you don't listen!
Thank you. As we have the hearings, everyone is allowed to, to weigh in on what's going on, and with all due respect, okay, we utilize our professionals in addition to comments from the citizenry, okay? Because the citizenry may sometimes feel the law says this, but the law doesn't. With all due respect, we have to follow the law as the courts follow it, not the way perhaps some citizens think the way it should be. But we understand, we understand that you want to be heard, and this is what we're doing here, and we have done things in this village. We have done things in this village as a result of people coming out and telling us that they need to see changes, and we will continue to do that, we will continue to do that. But because you don't necessarily get 100% of your way, that doesn't mean we're not paying attention to you. That means perhaps, perhaps, there's a different way to go about doing it. Now, you may not agree, and that is your, and that is, that is your right, but to malign these trustees, to say that they're doing something in the shadows is unfair to them, is unfair to them, and that's not right. We're all volunteers here, we're all volunteers here, and we all moved here for the same reason. Now, on that note, on that note, I believe the trustees would like to have their say in, in a way of perhaps summarizing their respective thoughts. So why don't we do this, we'll start with Mr. Van Alstine, and then we'll go with, uh, Trustee Valentine, and then we'll finish up with Trustee Cullen, and then I'll wrap up.
I'm going to ask, I say it's unconstitutional.
Mr. Van Alstine, please begin. Can you hear me? Thank you all for coming tonight.
If you want to sign off, can I say one short thing?
Sure, come on, name and address for the record, please.
I'm from Red Schoolhouse Road, 9117, and I was just wondering, I just see, I mean, I know from religious communities, if everybody comes together, usually you raise money, you make, you, you get funds to, to, to get your houses of worship in the way you need them. And I was thinking, this, this pressure on the village to find lots of five acres, which is not that easy to find, of course, and they're expensive too, but I see so many apartment buildings going up and spring down, and every little inch is used to make money, having more income, why not buy five lots of all the houses that are being bought? Many of them are torn down anyway because they're not big enough, so why not buy many different, you know, five different houses, and then have a huge lot where you can have, uh, your house of worship, and you wouldn't bother anybody, you follow the law, you have privacy, you have a lot of parking, and you have space, and you can keep some trees, and respect nature. I think that's, of how, everybody is welcome, everybody can do and come, this is a great village, we come from all nationalities and all religions, and just, let, let's just keep it so that we don't bother anybody, because I think that law was passed, because when people are religious, it's just love thy neighbor like yourself. I mean, it should just be an act of kindness and consideration for everybody, that's what your religion means to me. You know, it should be kindness and respect for others, and not just thinking, oh, I'm a gent, my, my, my niece in here, it bothers everybody. It can be done differently, and there will be enough money to buy five lots in a row, wherever they really want to, if they want to. I think that's what...
Thank you, Ms. Valentine. Okay, Ms. Valentine, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. I've been a Chestnut Ridge resident for 31 years. Please believe me, I share the same concerns as the people in the audience. In my opinion, transparency is a major concern for the residents of Chestnut Ridge. I believe this all will help the village do a better job bringing unpermitted houses of worship out of the shadows and in front of the boards. My decade of law is that transparency will be served. All applicants under the house of worship law will be vetted through the planning and zoning, planning and/or the zoning Board of Appeals. These are public meetings where residents of the village can ask questions and give opinions about the application. Positive or negative opinions will be heard, transparency will be served by this process. The house of worship law has been under consideration for more than three year, uh, for more than a year. Three public meetings, pardon, can you hear me? Monthly village meetings, many comments and questions have been submitted. Our village planner has written thoughtful answers to questions posed by the coupon group, Steve Mogul, attorney for coupon through his planner, Planet Main Street, and Booker Engineering. Suggestions from the villy, village residents have been considered and adopted, meaning that we're listening, we're working with you. The legal landscape, Arlopa is the law of the land, the message from the federal government is, state and local government may not discriminate based on a person's personal form of worship, period, that's what it says. Noncompliance has led villages in our county to lose Arlopa law suits 100% of the time. Losses in these cases have cost taxpayers in this village millions of dollars in legal fees and fines. Frankly, I don't want to waste money on fines and legal fees when I could have avoided them in the beginning. I'm sure you agree that we can put our tax dollars to work, to better use, like keeping our taxes low. Makes sense, doesn't it? The village certainly has its challenges with enforcement.